Good evening and welcome to the 2020 Virtual Board of Education Candidate Forum. This is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Dare County, and this year we're partnering with the North Carolina Coastal Federation. The Federation has contributed greatly to our technical skill and expertise, and we appreciate that. I am Lorelei DiBernardo. I am the coordinator for this forum, and I'd like to heartily thank the candidates, as well as everyone in our audience, for participating this evening. The League of Women Voters is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year. We were founded by the leaders of the women's suffrage movement, and we're very proud to continue the tradition of bringing the candidates and voters together, just like we are this evening. We're also proud to continue the fight today for equality for all Americans. We're recording tonight's meeting so that more Dare County voters can see and hear their candidates before they vote. That's a good thing. I want to say that if anybody in our audience tonight has any technical difficulties, we apologize. However, due to the large number of attendees and the variability of devices being used, we will be unable to troubleshoot those problems. However, you will be able to view tonight's program in its entirety on our YouTube page and as well as on our current TV channel. I will now introduce our moderator for this evening, Mary Jane Slazinski.
Good evening. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Dare County, and I live in Southern Shores. The League is a nonprofit, nonpartisan political organization. It encourages informed and active participation in all levels of government. It works to increase understanding of major public policy issues and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League maintains a strict, nonpartisan policy. It neither endorses nor opposes any political party or candidate. The League participates in a positive campaign project and has requested that each candidate take the Code of Campaign Ethics pledge. Participating in the webinar this evening are our technical team comprised of League member Craig Merrill, Michael Flynn, who is with the NC Coastal Federation, and Nancy Barandelli, League of Women Voters Board Member, who reviewed the questions we received from attendees and voters during the registration process. There are four Board of Education seats up for election. There are seven candidates for these seats. All candidates are present tonight. Candidates for the at-large seat are David Twitty, the incumbent, and Charles Parker, the challenger. Candidates for the District One seat are Bee Baznight, incumbent, and Carl Woody, challenger. The candidates for District Two seat are Jen Alexander and Susan Bothwell. Neither of them are presently seated on the board. And Mary Ellen Balance is running unopposed for reelection for the District Four seat. The format of the forum is as follows. All candidates will have two minutes for an opening statement. The timekeeper will signal when the candidate has 30 seconds remaining by showing her little 30-second sign, and she will signal with a stop sign if the candidate continues past the allotted time. She'll also ring a bell. If you hear the bell, you're in trouble. Next, opposed candidates will participate in the question and answer segment, answering questions that voters submitted during the forum registration process. This means that Mary Ellen Balance will sit out during that time. League reviewers have reviewed the questions for clarity, relevance, and to avoid duplication. These questions were addressed either to one candidate or all candidates, or a subset. Two minutes are allotted for responses. Again, the timer will signal the candidate when 30 seconds remains and display the stop sign if the candidate goes over the time allotted and ring the bell. Opportunities will not be extended to those who initially pass on a question. So if you feel you don't want to give an answer, you don't have to give an answer, but if you say you don't want to, that's it. Before we started, I created a random order for opening statements. We will reverse that order for the closing statements. We will begin with the opening statements from the candidates. First, Charles Parker.
Hello, everybody, and thank you, everybody who put this whole thing on and put on the one on Monday, and thank you for everybody who's in and listening. My opening statement, I threw it out about an hour ago, and I said, "Who's the most important person in my education?" It was my dad. He was born before the Wright Brothers flew, and he died knowing that men were going to land on the moon. He lived through World War I, the influenza. He always smiled when he said he lived through the roaring twenties and prohibition, World War II, Cold War, and the beginning of Vietnam. And one day, I turned to him and I said, "Dad, what was the worst time you lived through?" He looked and said, "There are no worse times. There are challenges." We have what we would think is really a worse time now, and it is, but it's a challenge that all of us can take and do something with. Everybody here has decided that we want to help with the challenge of the education of our youth, which is the most important thing, and that's what I'd like to help with. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jen Alexander.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the North Carolina Coastal Federation for hosting this forum, and to the citizens watching. I'm Jen Alexander, and I'm running for the District Two seat. I want to bring a needed perspective to the board that's not currently represented. As a mental health professional with two children in our schools, I am involved in our schools regularly. I'm not interested in joining the board as a hobby or as a part of a political agenda. I have a vested interest in our schools and have shown my commitment to our schools. In the seven years I volunteered on the parent-teacher organization, five of which were in a leadership capacity, I've spent the last 17 years serving our community's mental health needs. This experience affords me a unique understanding of the strengths and needs of our stakeholders. I believe we must both educate our children and keep our schools safe. I support a return-to-school option that offers choice between remote and in-person instruction. We must be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, and I will advocate within my good working relationship with our commissioners to provide the appropriate resources and services. We must balance supervision and collaboration with the superintendent and not rubber stamp all of his proposals without asking hard questions. In my profession, I have difficult but productive conversations every day. We must be accessible and transparent with our community, and I will advocate for board meetings to be available with both audio and visual, live, online, and cable. We must not only recruit and prepare our educators and administrators, but retain them by advocating for a culture that treats educators as the professionals they are. We must foster critical thinking skills to contribute to our society. I will advocate for both college-bound and work-bound students. I will advocate for the expansion of our technical location programs, partnerships with local businesses, and College of the Albemarle, and I look forward to your questions tonight.
Thank you. Next, Susan Bothwell.
Hi. My name is Susan Bothwell, and I'm running for Dare County Board of Education for District Two also. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and providing this service to the community. Since I was approached last fall to consider running for this position, I've been reading reams of information on Dare County schools and speaking with people who have school-age children and our teachers in our public schools. I've learned quite a bit. This is a very involved group, and they want the best education for their children. They want the best teachers, and what I hear the most often is they want their kids back in school. I'm passionate about doing everything I can to make that happen. First order of business, as I see it, is to get the kids back into in-class learning as quickly and as safely as practical, especially K through five. According to available evidence, they are least at risk for COVID and least likely to spread the virus. On the other hand, they are most at risk for academic failure when kept at home. They are also more in need of childcare and educational supervision. The educational, mental, physical, and social ramifications of not opening are very detrimental to our students. Children with special needs are extremely vulnerable to falling behind. Governor Coop announced that he is allowing K-5 to go back to in-class learning as of October 3rd, and I hope the current board agrees to do this. The administration has a plan in place to open our schools. It's a viable plan, and I think it should be implemented. Secondly is addressing the need to attract excellent teachers. In education, according to the roadmap of need, Dare County is number one out of 115 districts in North Carolina. That's pretty impressive. Dare County schools receive almost $23 million from the county and $33 million from the state. Teachers in Dare County make, on average, $59,200 a year. It's the highest median salary of the 115 districts. That being said, the cost of living in Dare County is 17% higher. Median home prices are 43% higher. Gas prices are 4%. The Board of Education has the discretion to add supplemental income out of the $23 million the county allotts. Perhaps it's time to revisit how these funds are allotted. More affordable housing is needed for teachers. Manio's especially in need. Teacher shortages through attrition and retirement must be addressed, as well as keeping salaries attractive so we can recruit and retain good teachers. We must be sure that our teachers know they are valued. We also must ensure all students have the tools to succeed.
You're over time.
According to the... Am I still on?
Yeah, but you're over time.
Oh, I didn't see nobody was on there with the paddle. Sorry. Okay, I will stop. Sorry. Okay, that's all right.
David Twitty.
Yes, good evening. My name is David Twitty, and I'm running for reelection for the District Five seat for the Dare County Board of Education. Thanks to the League of Women Voters tonight and the NC Coastal Federation for sponsoring the forum. I would like to start by saying thank you to everyone who's supported me over the past four years. It really means a lot to me and hope that I will continue to have your support come November. For those of you that don't know me, I'm a native Dare County, and I love my hometown. I attended Dare County schools and retired from the school system after a 30-year career. After retiring, I ran for and became a school board member. Over the past four years, our school system has accomplished many, many things. I would like just to share a few with you. We've increased communication between administrators and our stakeholders. Our graduation rate has increased to 94.9%, which is currently sixth in the state. We have added diversity and racial equity training for our staff. We have provided an employee assistant program. We've offered dual-language program for all elementary schools. This is the first county in the state to do so. And when it came to remote learning, we were well ahead of many of the other school systems in the state. Thanks again, and I look forward to tonight's forum.
Thank you. Mary Ellen Balance.
Thank you all for listening in tonight, and thank you to the Dare County League of Women Voters for putting this together. As a current member of the Dare County Board of Education, I have worked with a solid board of diverse minds with a common goal of making the schools in Dare County the very best. Under the leadership of Chairwoman Bee Baznight, I have learned how to be an open, honest, and productive board member. I am supportive of the hard work that has been done to bring new opportunities to our students, such as the Career and College Promise with COA, Dual-Language Immersion Program, and the Emerging Leaders Program that helps train our teachers and staff to be prepared for growth within our district. As a board member, I have served on the Five-on-Five Committee that works with our county commissioners to help fund our schools. I am extremely proud of the relationship that this board has with our county commissioners under the leadership of Chairman Bob Woodard. For the past two years, I've had the honor to serve as vice chair on this board alongside Chairwoman Baznight. Her insight and knowledge of not just curriculum, but her ability to relate to teachers, students, and community has allowed me to grow, not only as a board member, but also as a leader. Until we resume face-to-face instruction, remote learning will continue to be a challenge. The Board of Education needs to put forth a deliberate effort to foster strong relationships between the teachers, parents, and the administration to give them the support they need. We need to continue to build teacher morale by listening to their concerns and supporting them by providing additional training and access to programs that will build confidence in ways they are able to deliver instruction. No single person has the right answers, however. Our central office administration continues to go above and beyond to foster relationships with all staff and community stakeholders to get their input on how we move forward. Now is the time that we sit down and have some collaborative discussions on how we use that information to make Dare County schools even better. With your vote, I will help Dare County Board of Education take our staff to the next level and get our students prepared for their future. Thank you.
Thank you. Bee Baznight.
I'm Bee Baznight, and I'm delighted to be with you this evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for your creativity and to the Coastal Federation for your creativity in gathering voters to hear the views of the candidates for the Dare County Board of Education. I am running for reelection to the District One seat on the Board of Education, representing the mainland and Roanoke Island, but I will work for all students, educators, and families. I consider my experience as a classroom teacher at Manio Elementary School the best-on-the-job training for a school board member. Having been in a Dare County classroom gives me an insight into the needs of our students and teachers and the everyday workings of a school. I believe the focus should always be on ensuring high-quality and safe learning environments for all students. I was instrumental in bringing the Carolina College Advising Corps to Dare County schools, a program in which recent college graduates help our high school students find their best match and fit for life after high school. I am an advocate for vocational education, and under my leadership, our career technical education courses... I have been active in the Dare County Schools partnership with the College of the Albemarle, which offers huge savings for our families by allowing students to graduate from high school with an associate's degree. Under my leadership, the schools have put Chromebooks into the hands of every student in Dare County schools, and this has been very important during remote learning. I am a strong advocate for our Emerging Leaders Program of increasing teacher pay and smaller class sizes and additional teacher housing, and I pledge to you to be a full-time board member, devoting down every day to our schools and to helping our students. The school business is about our children, and I will continue to put them first, providing opportunities for every student by investing our education dollars responsibly and by advocating for all students, educators, and our community. My colleagues on the Board of Education have put their trust in me by electing me as the chairman for four years. I am asking for your trust by casting your vote for Bee Baznight. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl Woody.
Me finally. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this webinar. For those that don't know me, my name is Carl Woody, and I have over 30 years of public service. Seventeen of those years are with Dare County schools as the technology director. I have successfully worked with teachers, staff, and administrators on hundreds of projects. One of those projects was deploying the first one-to-one student laptop program for Dare County schools. As my time as the technology director for Dare County schools, I also secured $3.7 million in federal funding for technology. If elected to the Board of Education, I would like to provide more opportunities for our students. One of those opportunities is leadership training. I believe that Dare County schools needs a program like the Junior Leadership Program sponsored by the Coast Guard. I also believe that every high school needs to have an early college program and that students that are going to a four-year college, that they should have an option to graduate high school with an associate's degree. For those students not going to college, we need to make sure that we have a program with COA for certifications, trades, or some other special skill that they may get. Now, COA is in the process of building a $16 million campus in Manio. We need to make sure that we take advantage of this valuable resource. Dare County schools have some of the best teachers and staff you'll ever find. I plan to work with the board to provide retention incentives such as 401K matching and affordable housing options, but most of all, I want to provide an opportunity to open a line of communication between the staff and the board. And one more thing, I would also like to deploy a web-based budget dashboard to provide transparency to the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Now, we'll have the questions submitted by our audience and the League, and I just want to say that I randomized your order by draw of the hat, and then I tried to get it so that everybody followed, you know, everybody had a chance to be first and everybody had a chance to be last, and then we reordered some questions. So if you feel either advantaged or disadvantaged, it wasn't on purpose. It was good till we started messing with it. So anyway, bear with me, and if it happens that you're not where you think you should be, you will be. There are plenty of questions and plenty of time to answer it. Okay, first question, and this is one that was submitted by the League. What do you see as the most pressing issue facing Dare County schools, and what would your approach be to that issue when elected? And we'll hear from Bee Baznight first.
Thank you. Well, in today's world, the most pressing issue right now is reopening our schools to our students. As a teacher, I know that in-person learning is the best way we can instruct our students. We have a board meeting coming up October 1st with the governor's announcement of allowing fewer restrictions on our students in grades K through five. That opens up more options for us to look at, to be able to open our schools safely, and to get our students back in school. One of the things that is right now is a challenge is that before we can make decisions, we need to understand and know how many students will be selecting a virtual option. Once we have that determined, then we determine how many students will actually be in classrooms. We also have to look at the staffing issues. We have staff members who, for medical reasons, are not able to return to a classroom at this point, as long as we're still under the COVID restrictions. So we have to be able to match the virtual teachers with the virtual students. That, to me, is right now is the huge challenge for our schools, and that's what we're tackling at this point. And, you know, I'm doing my job as a board member to try to solve those problems and work with our boards working very hard, our administration, our teachers. There have been teacher-focused groups yesterday and today to get as much input as we can to find out how we can move forward to get our kids back in school.
Thank you. Mr. Woody.
Yes, it's definitely the remote learning. I've talked to several parents. They've come to me, and the remote learning for elementary school is not working. It's hard to keep a first, second, or third grade focused on a computer for a certain amount of time. So we definitely need to get our elementary schools back into the classroom, if not the middle and high schools maybe a little bit later, but I believe we need to address and get our students back into the classroom.
Thank you. Mr. Twitty.
Yes, thanks again. I agree with both of them. We do need to get our kids back in the classroom. Under the governor's executive order released, I guess, last week with K-5, that's promising for us, but we also have a big picture of our six through 12 and, you know, our athletic programs. They're saying we're going to be able to do sports come November, but none of our kids has been out on the field. They've not had their calisthenics and other things like that. So when we come from our board meeting on October 1st, I hope that we will give all that information to our residents, not just what K through five will be doing, but the plan throughout six through 12 and also our athletic programs.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Twitty. Ms. Bothwell.
Yeah, I can't disagree with the remote learning being the strongest problem we have at the moment, because much of the success of virtual learning actually rests with the parents. Feedback from parents I've spoken to is mixed. High schoolers are tending to do pretty well with remote learning, grades five through nine not so much. The kids get frustrated and just walk away and don't do their assignments. There actually came a study came out today between Brown University and administrators through over 550 schools across 46 states, and they have come up with new information about the amount of people, the amount of kids that are actually suspected or confirmed of having the virus, and it is extremely, extremely low. And they're recommending that the schools should be cautious that the students need to get back into class learning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lost my place here. Mr. Parker.
Bee Baznight said it the best. We have to be cognizant of all of the different issues, come up with a best solution for everybody, and what I would extend is, we should go slow, we should go carefully. If we make a mistake, we could really set back Dare County, our students, and the health of people in Dare County. We don't know everything yet, so the way the board is operating right now, I think, is wonderful. Really, that's it. I don't agree with the idea just because they say, "Okay, open up." Possibly, with all the information given, yes, the younger kids, but we've seen with the colleges and with sports, and I love sports, there's an opportunity to really go wrong, and we don't want to go wrong, we just want to go right, and that's it.
Okay, Mr. Parker, thank you. Ms. Alexander.
I work with whatever else says of balancing the needs on the COVID-19. As a mental health professional and an involved parent, I have these challenges, meetings, like emotional needs of our children and families. I have a fifth grader and an eighth grader who have been doing remote learning. One has done fantastic, the other not so much, and it isn't actually the way that a lot of people are assuming. My elementary student has done fantastic, and my middle school student has struggled. So I think it's important to have a parent voice on the Board of Education because we do bring another perspective. I would like to see choice in how students and teachers safely return to school. State health mandates do not come with the ad hoc thing for all middle and high school students to return, as we need to hire more teachers and staff in order to offer that choice between in-person instructional learning. You know, soundbites are great, let's talk about how, and we need to talk about what is getting in the way, and how do we strategize them. The key pieces is that we make our networks secure for remote learning. Has been an important opportunity for a lot of our families, and a lot of us have been able to do well with it, but I think that we need to use our director of technology and our network engineer to ensure that our networks are secure. We need to be both realistic and creative in strategizing around this, but we need to also recognize that the current state health mandates preclude a lot of the aspects of the usual social and academic experiences that we're used to in school. And so while I support a return-to-school option, I think it's very important to be realistic about what that's going to look like, because again, soundbites are great, everybody back in school, but what's it going to look like and who's going to pay for it?
Thank you. We're going to skip what was question two because you've answered that in question one. So we're going to go on to the non-incumbents. What specifically would you do differently than the incumbent, and how would you complete this? And so for this one, we have Mr. Parker.
One of the things I was looking at, I was a mailman, and I delivered to the teacher housing, and I met some fantastic young teachers who wouldn't be here teaching if we didn't have the housing. The Board of Commissioners talked about affordable housing, etc., at their go-around, and we have the problem here, but we might have a solution. And the solution would be, let's build some more housing. The easy solution is pay them more, but if we built more housing, we could help more younger teachers. And I looked at the Tourism Bureau. They have a mandate to help with all the problems that tourism bring, and some of that is the expense of living here. Now, the Tourism Bureau has spent millions upon millions of dollars at their event site, which if you look at the record, say, even if they do their best, they're going to lose half a million dollars a year trying to promote that. If we basically told them, "Events are nice, but teachers are better," and possibly they'll say that the legislation enacting this wouldn't allow that. Legislation can be changed. I think it's most important that we have the ability for younger teachers to live here, and that's one way. Thank you.
Ms. Alexander.
Can you repeat the question?
Okay. What specifically would you do differently than the incumbent, and how would you complete this? This was submitted, by the way, by Alan Moran.
The incumbent? Well, there isn't, well, there is not really...
You know, the incumbent. What's that, the incumbent?
What would I do differently in regards to, just in general?
In general.
Okay, well, I mean, I think the biggest thing I would do differently is bring a voice that's not on the board. We don't, we need a board that represents our community and looks like our community, and we have a great diversity on the board currently, but I think that, you know, adding a parent to the board, someone who has children in the schools currently, would be an additional voice that would be helpful to balance out the board. You know, right now, COVID is a very important topic, and I think the mental health issues around that are very important, but we also need to look at kind of longer term, and historically, we've really had a lot of concern about school safety, and I think that that's a perspective that I can bring to the board, as well as a mental health professional. I've met with our sheriff, I support our school...
I've met with our sheriff, I support our school resource officers, and I have a good understanding of some of the things that, that might be helpful in understanding when we're looking at school safety and the things that, um, we really need to consider. So, but what would I do differently than the incumbent? I would bring a parent and a mental health perspec- professionals' voice to the board.
Thank you. Mr. Woody?
There's a couple of things. Um, first, um, I truly believe that our students need to have some sort of leadership training. If you're not familiar with the Ju- Junior Leadership Program sponsored by the Coast Guard, there's only two districts in the United States that have this program. And the one school that has it down in Miami-Dade, their school is ranked 143rd in USA Today School Reports. Our schools are, I think, 2,700 and 2,600. So I think leadership plays a lot in the learning and discipline of the students. But I also think, yeah, I'm going to point on security. Um, I've worked for Dare County Schools, so I'm familiar with what security has been installed in the school system and we can do better, um, especially when it comes to the lockdown plans and so forth. And I guess, uh, the, the last, you know, biggest, big thing is affordable housing. I know we have affordable housing on the beach and in Hatteras, so there is nothing in Manio. But, um, you know, I've talked to community members and I've listened to different things. Uh, there, there are rumblings on having, um, affordable housing in Manio. But, uh, I guess those were the, the three things.
Thank you. Ms. Boswell?
I think the Board of Education, uh, needs to work together for the benefit of all the students. And, uh, that means obtaining the best faculty and administrators and definitely providing more affordable housing, especially in Manio. We need to be proactive and transparent in commuting with teachers and faculty and parents. I would work closely with the administration and county leaders to ensure we do everything within our means to allow our kids to succeed. I, as far as I have heard, there, uh, we have cooperation with local law enforcement to ensure schools remain safe for students and faculty, and I think they've done a good job with that. We need to create a pipeline for employment opportunities through internships and apprenticeships. Just those kind of things I would promote.
Thank you. Now, we're going to question four. This was a question that was previously asked at the 2018 forum. It is still relevant, and some of you touched on this a little bit, but if you'd like to flesh it out a little bit more. How can the Dare County Board of Education support educators and staff with the rising cost of living and housing in our, um, county? And the first one, Mr. Woody?
Well, the biggest thing is, you know, affordable housing. We need, we need to pursue that. We know there's an issue. Um, we need to work with the community and different foundations to ensure that, uh, we do get the affordable housing, um, for students. But other things, you know, from an incentive, a retention incentive, to make sure that we keep the, the, the qualified teachers that we have is to, to have a 401K matching. I mean, I've worked 30 years and this is the only schools, only system that did not have any 401K matching. Uh, it's the little things that, um, that I think would make retention better for our students, um, or, or for our staff, but, uh, th- those are the two main things.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Bos- Boswell?
Um, yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Woody on, on, on that. But, um, the Board of Education does have the discretion to add supplemental income. And perhaps that would be a, a big draw. I think we should, um, have tuition incentives, um, maybe allow, give them a, a break on tuition to, to, um, keep their, um, sorry, my thing just went off. So that they can take more classes and, and get more degrees, so they can make more money. Teacher, the housing is probably the most important to attract teachers.
Thank you. Ms. Alexander?
Might clarify a question?
Okay. How can Dare County Board of Education support educators and staff with the rising cost of living and housing in our county?
So, you know, one of the things that obviously is, I'm sorry, I'm having some internet connectivity issues, can you, does it sound all right?
Not, not exactly right, but I think we can make out what you're saying.
Okay. Well, we definitely need to increase the teacher supplement. I think that's one, um, aspect that would really help, um, in terms of retaining or recruiting our teachers or addressing the housing issue. But I also want to hit on another topic. You know, there, the hot topic is about teacher pay. And we talked about average teacher pay, but often the average teacher pay is being core, is, uh, including administrator pay. And that really skews the numbers in terms of what the average educator is actually making, which could make a significant difference in what they can afford housing-wise. So I think first, we need to be really honest about what our teacher pay is, and we need to reexamine what our teacher pay, uh, is. And we need to take a look at increasing the teacher supplement. Um, I think those are some of the things that need to happen. Um, additionally, I know our Board of Commissioners has been working, um, with the University of North Carolina on a, a program to look at affordable housing in our community in general. I think the concern, um, you know, for our educators is that although we do have teacher housing available, um, we do have a lot of educators who are coming to our community and finding that the cost of living in general is just too high. And so I think it really is going to circle back to teacher pay. And I think we need to be honest about what our teacher pay really is, because I'm going to tell you one thing, I got a lot of teacher friends and they're not making 50-some thousand dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Twitty?
Well, it's funny how you can remember some questions in 2018, and I remember this one really well because, uh, Ms. Bassnight was prior to me of answering the question. And she said, well, maybe we need to take a bus and go to Raleigh and speak on behalf of our staff. And when it was my turn, I said, Ms. Bassnight, I will drive the bus, since I was a certified bus driver and still am. Our local board did take a van to the legislative building and we went around and spent all day long speaking on behalf of staff, of teachers' salary increase. So we done what we, you know, we were challenged to do and fulfilled the duty that we felt that was best. And with that, when we came back, we've, uh, sharpened our pencils, we've, uh, got Dr. Farley here recently, we've got, uh, working into the process in increasing the teacher sup- supplements, but with COVID-19 hitting like it did, as we all know, everything has just went right down to the wayside. But we do have communication with the, uh, NCAE rep, um, for local Dare County. The committee met, uh, prior to COVID-19. We were in the, in the area of meeting more and more to try to get with our local commissioners. And, you know, our commissioners has done nothing but support Dare County Schools in many, many ways. So we have, uh, tried to do that and, and it's still on our agenda to keep moving forward as we get back as normal as possible. Uh, teacher housing, uh, we all know that that's an issue here. Affordable housing, not just with teachers, but our local, uh, uh, employees, uh, is, it is hard. We have a, many of people coming out from other sides of the counties coming in to Dare to work, so we know there's an issue there. As your DEF rep, Dare Education Foundation rep to Dare County School Board, um, we've met and talked about, uh, affordable housing in, on Roanoke Island. Uh, that's not been set in stone, but, you know, it is on the table and we're looking forward to, uh, to make things work in the future for us.
Thank you, and I'm glad to hear that the, uh, forum was so memorable. Okay, next one, um, Mr. Parker?
Okay. First off to David Twitty. You're not the only person running for office who has driven a school bus in the past. I have too. And then number two to Carl Woody. Everybody comes up with good ideas and it doesn't matter who, where, when. I like your idea of the Coast Guard. When I graduated from college, I was, also was commissioned a second lieutenant in the Army through ROTC. So your idea is a fabulous idea. Now going back, I answered the question already about housing and what I think we should do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bassnight?
I said all that and I'm sorry. Going back to the ROTC that Mr. Parker just mentioned. I met a couple, about a year and a half ago with the officers out of Elizabeth City's Coast Guard Base and, uh, listened to the whole presentation and we found out the particulars of that. Uh, we did surveyed and our, surveyed our high school's, uh, students and we did not have the interest among students to meet the requirements of that. So I just wanted to throw that out. The second thing is that, um, I certainly support teacher supplements. Uh, there, as this Mr. Twitty mentioned, we have a commission, uh, made up of teachers and administrators who have studied that, and of course, COVID-19 kind of brought that to a halt. But I had met with Chairman Woodard of the Commissioners several times to talk about that. I brought it up four years ago in our five-on-five committee meeting and he said, V., just get us, let me get through the salary schedule study of the county employees and then we're going to look at the teacher supplement. So I have been on that for quite a while, um, and we certainly need to do that. Um, the, uh, as Mr. Twitty mentioned, the affordable housing, the teacher housing, we have them in Run Hill Ridge and Kill- Killable Hills and in Buckston. Um, just three weeks ago, um, I had a meeting with other board members and Chairman Woodard and Mr. Alton and the DEF Chair, Sam Cortez, to talk about a possibility of building, um, housing on Roanoke Island. I've even gotten in a truck and ridden around and looked at properties on Roanoke Island that could be available for the teacher housing. So I think that those are the things that we can do to support the teachers. And, and, um, we did have a very exciting trip to Raleigh. We got in the van and we rode to Raleigh and we walked the halls of the legislature. So, um, I am very supportive of doing everything we can to help our teachers live here and work here because we, they are the best.
Thank you. Thank you all. Very informative. Now, here's one more moving up because we felt that was really important. This is a two-part question. Mary Ann Williams asks, how will you improve the learning experience for children with special needs in this county? And Larissa York asks about the opposite end. Some feel that the academically or intellectually gifted students are not well-supported in Dare County Schools. How would you improve this? And we'll start with Mr. Woody.
Uh, so the first part was for the handicap?
Uh, the, it says here, the, um, children with special needs is what it says.
Special needs. Well, you know, kids with special needs need a special circumstance. They need a special teacher that can help them. They can't do any of that remote. They need to be in an environment where somebody can help them. Uh, it's, 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 it's not going to work remotely, um, from the gifted side. Um, my child was, was in the gifted class and, uh, I, I believe Dare County did a great job moving her through, helping her do whatever she needed to do. So I, I do believe, um, you know, all of our teachers take care of all of our kids through, regardless if they're gifted or if they're, um...
Special needs. Okay. Ms. Alexander?
I'm a licensed clinical social worker. This is my fourth day. I work with families who have special needs. I work with families who, um, have academically or intellectually gifted children. And I think the first and foremost thing that needs to be done to improve, um, those programs and the services for children is to survey the families and ask them. I'm a firm believer that, you know, a board member should be a voice or a representative. So I may have ideas as a clinical social worker based on my experience, but I want to ask the people who are actually in, in the shoes, who are doing it, who are living the life and experiencing, um, parenting a child who has special needs or raising a child, uh, or parenting a child who is academically gifted. Um, I was in the academically gifted program in the school system that I grew up in and it was really beneficial for me and gave me a real leg up and, and help in terms of making a long-term plan for the career and the life that I wanted. I have a child who has a 504 plan, um, currently in our schools who has special needs and my child has had a fantastic experience in Dare County Schools. But I think a big piece of that is that my profession is advocating for children. And so I think I'm uniquely qualified to be able to address that issue. And I think first and foremost is to listen to the people who are living the life and find out from them, what do you want to see happen? And take that information, come back to the board and take a look at what are the possibilities? I'm definitely a believer in not making promises you can't keep. I think it's extremely important to gather the information and address it in a way that is genuine and meaningful, because again, soundbites are great, right? But wh- what will it actually look like? And so I think we really need to start with surveying the families who currently have children in the academically or intellectually gifted programs, as well as parents and families who have a child with special needs and find out from them. What do you want to see? What do you see lacking?
Thank you. Ms. Boswell?
Um, yeah, I agree with Mr. Woody. I think it all goes back again to, um, hiring the best teachers possible for, um, any type of student. Those with special needs, of course, have special needs and they, they need a little more guidance and, um, and it's, it's just goes back to the teachers once again. I, yes, I agree. Surveys are great, but I would assume that all these parents with special needs children and gifted children aren't having their voices known. Um, so I, like I said, I agree with Mr. Woody on this one.
Thank you. Mr. Twitty?
Well, as we all know, our, our current staff, um, will send up surveys to our stakeholders. And, um, by all means that if a parent has questions or concerns about their student in the class, by all means, pick up the phone, call the central office, um, prior to, uh, your, your school administrators. Currently, our EC program, uh, we've increased some, some working there and over what we've seen in the last few years, our students are outperforming any students around our district and really in the top state. So I think we, I think our teachers are doing a wonderful job and, um, and work for them.
Okay. Thank you. And, uh, uh, Mr. Parker?
My wife's brother, when he was born, his life expectancy was eight. He lived till 64. The state in New York turned to his parents and said, would you like to put him in one of our hospitals? They refused. My father-in-law helped start one of the first A R Cs, et cetera. People look at me and say, what, what's with Michael? And I'd say, he's our special Olympian, and that's the answer. But we have an opportunity now that we have learned some things for both special needs on one spectrum and special needs on another spectrum. Our distance-based learning that our teachers are doing fabulously can be adopted to help individualize things for students on either end to help them get better, faster, more knowledge, et cetera. So we have an, like I said, well, my dad, he said, there are challenges. This is a challenge that perhaps we can work on to help our students. There's my answer.
Okay. Thank you. Did I get everybody on that one? I believe so. Right?
I didn't answer that question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, how did I, I, I rolled over you.
All right. It's okay. For our exceptional children's program, right now in Dare County, we have close to 700 students in that program. And we recently, you know, during remote learning, because it has been very difficult for them, we have, uh, provided opportunities for some of the students in the EC program to have some socially distanced and safe social activities, which has been really good for them. We've expanded our EC programs and we're provide, we have provided training for our teachers, our teacher assistants that work with the special needs children. We've done training across the board for our teachers, administrators on adverse childhood experiences, which has been very helpful in that area. Moving to the, uh, and we also have a lead, we have a lead autism teacher who helps across the, across the district with all of our students who are autistic. On the AIG side, the gifted side, we have a, a plan, the county has a plan and the board reads it and approves it, and it has to be approved and sent to the state. We have, uh, increased our advanced placement classes, our honors classes. Um, I know in the, in elementary school, we have the AIG facilitators in each school and they, uh, pull the students and work with the students who are qualified for that program. Um, we, we're doing very well in those, in those areas, um, for, you know, both the special needs children and the, the gifted children. So I'm very pleased with what our teachers are doing. They, they really step up to the plate and, and take care of our, our, our students. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Again, I apologize.
That is.
Okay, next one. Historically, the Dare, uh, Board of Education candidates ran without declaring a political party. Beginning in 2018, the race became partisan. Do you support a partisan race or would you support returning to a nonpartisan race and why? And this was a lead question. Ms. Boswell?
I've never understood why Board of Education would be partisan. Any school district my children were in, um, it never was. I don't think it should even come into, uh, question or conversation. The point of the board is to do the best for all... The point of the board is to do the best for all the kids, all the faculty. Just do the best they can, politics aside. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bassnight?
I do not support a partisan school board. I think that schools are about children, not politics and parties. And that's a downfall. I think one of the other things is that in an election that's partisan, the election takes place in November, which places the new board member in the office in December, in the middle of a school year. It's much better if a, a board member can come on in July and be involved in all the planning, the budget planning, getting to know the teachers, getting to know the schools, how, you know, how things operate. Prior to the partisan, partisanship bill that became law, our board voted unanimously to oppose it. We wrote a resolution. The Dare County Board of Commissioners also opposed it and sent a resolution. However, it was a local bill and included nine counties, and Dare County was one of those. And it did pass into law. But I do not think the school board should be partisan.
Thank you. Mr. Twitty?
Yes, my role is to, is to serve the community and the parents and the staff and our children in this county. And that's how I feel about it.
Okay. Ms. Alexander?
I know we've got a time limit on this, so I'm going to go quick. I'm against the partisanship on the board. I think it's poisoning the board currently. Did you know that here in Dare County, we have more unaffiliated and independent voters than either of the two major parties? I'm a registered Democrat, but I share many of the perspectives of my friends across the spectrum. And most importantly, I think it's important to look at the role of a school board member through the lens of what's in the best interest of our schools, not what's in the best interest of a political party. As Ms. Bassnight indicated, the timing is a real concern. It's something I'm really concerned about is, is coming on board, you know, mid-school year and not having the opportunity to be part of the budget process and also getting orientated prior to the school year starting. To reiterate a little bit of what Ms. Bassnight had pointed out, you know, a few years ago, some members of the General Assembly in Raleigh decided to introduce a local bill that only applies to specific counties and later passed the law that our board became partisan. This was an extremely unusual move because the bill was introduced without any local input or request to do so. Typically, local bills are introduced due to local constituent and local government request. But our Board of Education and Board of Commissioners had both passed resolutions in opposition to the bill making the Board of Education race partisan. So it makes you wonder. You know, despite the law having passed, I remain firm, the board must use the lens of what's in the best interest of Dare County schools rather than one of partisanship. I remain firm that our representation ought to be reflective of our community. And I would bring a perspective that's complimentary to the board. I'm really grateful for the support of people from across the political spectrum. But ultimately, the school board is about the schools. And I, I just find it very curious that, that Raleigh thought they had it more figured out than our, our local governing bodies and, and local constituencies. So I am, I am certainly in opposition to this, the board being partisan and it's poisoning the current board, in my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Woody?
Yeah, I don't believe it should be partisan. But whoever gets in, whether it's a Republican or a Democrat, we're all going to be for the kids. We're all going to be for the faculty. So I think we will, regardless of who you are, you're going to fight for the students, the teachers and the faculty.
Mr. Parker?
Well, I agree with what absolutely everybody has said here and all their particular reasons. And I just think that something that was politically motivated should not occur within our school district. And that law was atrocious and it should be overturned. And we should be fighting that. That's my point.
Okay. Well, thank you all for your answers. And I'm glad you explained how that came to be because I've had questions from people in the community saying, "What the heck is going on here?" So hopefully, all those people that had questions are listening tonight. And thank you for your answers. Number six, here's an interesting one. "Do you believe that the teaching of history in our public schools should reflect both the achievements and the failings of important individuals in our nation? Or should we be focusing on a patriotic history only? Please explain your position." And this was submitted by John Towler. You want it again? "Do you believe that the teaching of history in our public schools should reflect both the achievements and the failings of important individuals in our nation? Or should we be focusing on a patriotic history only? Please explain."
First thing that came to mind when I heard that question and, and kind of ran it through my mind and to make sure I was understanding it correctly was, I believe the teaching of history should be done the Walter Cronkite way. And that is the facts only. And what I mean by that is, when we talk about the patriotic view, what is patriotic? Well, patriotism is, is, is both believing in our country and also dissent. And so we need to, we need to take a look at what were the strengths and the failings of the various leaders and, and things that have happened throughout, throughout our history. But I think we need to take the Walter Cronkite approach and give the facts. If we forget our past, we're doomed to repeat it. So history is extremely important. And I, I think what Mr. Towler, I think the intent of the question is to try to understand or maybe flush out a little bit more about what, what are the nuances that are involved in the teaching of history? And not being a history teacher, I won't pretend to, to know exactly what that should look like as a citizen and as a, as an avid follower of history, particularly the United States Constitution. I find that facts are helpful and facts are not debatable. We need to know the date. We need to know where. We need to know who. We need to know when. We need to know why. And when we talk about the why, sure, we do need to talk about what was the dissenting view as to why? And what was the majority view as to why?
Ms. Bassnight?
Thank you. Well, I, I was a teacher of history. I taught social studies. It's great. So I, I believe it's, it's history. It's what happened. It's the facts. We have, you know, we have textbooks that gave us the information. We had a, we have a standard course of study in North Carolina that gives us the information. So I think you have to, you have to teach and you have to, our children have to know what happened in history. You know, it's the, it's not just all, all good. Some of it is, was dissenting. We had some, we had lots of achievement in history, but it is what happened in history. And I think that that's, that's what we have, we have to keep teaching our children.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Woody?
Yeah, when it comes to teaching, teaching of history, I mean, you, you've got to teach the good and the bad. I mean, there's good times in our history, patriotic times in our history, and there's bad times in our history that need to be addressed. Everybody needs to know what happened. And that's what history is all about. So I think, you know, teaching the good and the bad needs to be done.
Okay. Ms. Bothwell?
Yeah, I'm assuming that this question was all about the 1619 project that is being promoted to change when America was actually America. I don't think American history should be discarded or rewritten. I think, yes, we have to teach all the facts, but not... There shouldn't be any bias and the teachers should not be teaching political biases. They should teach just the facts. Otherwise, our kids won't have the critical thinking skills they need, the curiosity. They need to not be afraid to speak up. There's, there's no place for intimidation or camp, you know, cancel culture ideology. I teach history as it is, good, the bad, the ugly, and go from there. Thanks.
Mr. Parker?
Like me, I was a history major in college. And when you read that off, my hackles got up when I heard patriotic history. And then I remembered what Stephen Decatur said in the early 1800s. He gave a toast at a big fancy dinner and he said, "My country, may she always be in the right, but my country, right or wrong?" No, my country, we always hope she's always in the right. But when our country is wrong, we should learn from it and get better. History should be taught with all the warts. You don't have to present them all that badly or whatever. It's a balanced history. And in that balancing, there are questions. And students can say, "Well, I kind of agree this, but I like this." They can discuss and also build up their critical thinking. Was, World War II. Why did we not bomb all of the Holocaust sites? We would have killed lots of people in there. Why didn't we bomb all of the railroads there? That's a question to be asked. And there were lots of answers to be on. Students can work on that and get critical seals. So no, I'm not for patriotic. I'm for all the bells and whistles and we can discuss them. That's my point.
Thank you. Mr. Twitty?
Yes, you know, currently, our teachers have the flexibility in teaching the curriculum. But the bottom line is that we have to follow North Carolina state standards. That's where we stand currently right now.
I'm sorry, I lost the last part of your answer.
I'm sorry. We, we still have to follow the North Carolina state standards. That's our...
Gotcha.
That's what we have to do.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on. "What mental health resources do you plan to expand for students experiencing depression due to lack of in-person learning?" This was submitted by Hannah Yetser. And the first person, Ms. Alexander?
Well, one of the things I'd love to see happen is that the mental health professionals in our schools, the numbers or ratios rather, be on par with what the national professional organizations recommend. For example, the National Association of Social Workers, the National Association of School Social Workers, the National Association of School Psychologists. And the ratios that are recommended there, that would be a good place to start is to make sure that we're at those ratios that are recommended by the professional organizations to make sure that we're having adequate mental health resources already in our schools. With, with COVID and this experience, I mean, the isolation and the, the social separation, I mean, there's so many, everything everyone's already talked about. I mean, there's been so many negative aspects, mental health-wise. There have been a lot of positives for some people, but there have been a lot of negatives. And so what will you do when, when the kids come back? We're going to have to hire some people. I, I think we're going to have to hire some people. I don't think that we're going to be able to, to task our school social workers and our school guidance counselors and school psychologists that are currently on staff to be able to address this issue because it's going to be pretty significant, is, is my anticipation. Being a, a child and family therapist and working with children and families, I can tell you, we've seen a real uptick in referrals. And it's, it's been very concerning. And again, I, you know, I just, I make my plug again that, you know, I am the only candidate that has both children in the schools and is a mental health professional.
Thank you. Mr. Parker?
Well, I think Jen said it all. We, again, here's our challenges. We have to prepare for the worst and hope we get the best. But preparing for the worst is, we might need a whole bunch more people to help our students. And that would help their parents and the rest of the community. So what Jen said? Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Bothwell? I'm Mr. Bothwell, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Part of it will come down to what we can afford, if we can afford more professional health people in the schools. I would think that it's, this isolation issue is being addressed, hopefully with parents already having their kids get some outside help. Though, I'm, I'm not sure that necessarily it's going to be important for the schools to have the onus to take care of all that. Hopefully, the parents are already addressing that issue.
Okay. Mr. Twitty?
Yes, when you said the question, my, my computer went dead. Could you tell, repeat that question for me, please?
"What mental health resources do you plan to expand for students experiencing depression due to the lack of in-person learning?"
That's a good question. You know, currently, right now, we're one of the few school districts that have school nurses already in our facilities. We have two social workers, as Jen said, that's certainly not enough for the system that we currently serve. And with possible virtual schooling that may come in future, that's things that we're going to have to get there and work as, as board meetings keep going to see the needs and, and we'll get that information from our staff.
Thank you. Mr. Woody?
I think everybody on here is correct. I mean, we're going to have to get more involved with more healthcare users with the administration. It, it, it takes a joint effort to, to tackle this problem. But I, I, I've got to agree with what everybody says so far.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Bassnight?
Yes, thank you. Everyone is, is, is right. It's been a really tough time for our, our students during remote learning. Our teachers are in constant contact with our families during this remote learning. They are not only doing the academic piece, but they are also dealing with the social and emotional aspect of it and checking in with our students. We definitely need more social workers. We haven't, we've added two in the last couple of years, which they work every day and they're very, very important. Governor Cooper, under the CARES, the COVID CARES Act, is providing more money to districts so that we can hire more counselors and social workers. So I hope that we can move forward with that as quickly as possible. As right now, in preparation for seeing our, our students again in our classrooms, our teachers, our counselors, our social workers are building a plan to transition our students when they come back to school. And it's going to be important for not just our counselors, you know, to be able to be there for our students, our social workers who are stretched thin, but everyday teachers, the classroom teachers deal with our students for the most part of the day. And they need that training to be able to, to deal with these, the students that are having some, some mental health issues and some emotional problems from the remote learning and being isolated for so many months. So we are, we are on it and we're working towards that.
Thank you. Now, we're right on the cusp of when we have to stop here. So could I ask one more question that was thought to be an important question? And give one-minute answers so that we can squeeze it in before Ms. Laurel I calls for the time for closing statements. "Are there specific changes Dare County schools might implement to foster greater interest in viable careers in commercial fishing and the seafood industry?" This was submitted by Susan West of Buxton. And first, Ms. Bothwell, and again, as brief as you can be.
I would say just apprenticeships, getting the community more involved, teaching... That's basically all it, it needs to be, is community involvement.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Twitty?
I have to agree. That is a very important occupation that we have in Dare County. I remember when I was in high school, my junior, senior year in that CTE program, we had a fishing class. And we loved, we, we learned the whole outdoors and the, the rules and regulations of the water. And I'm, I'm all for it. Whatever we can do is a board working with COA and commercial fishermen. You know, we can, we can have them come in and teach classes, possibly. So anything like that, I'm certainly, I'm certain for.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Woody?
Yeah, we definitely need to get COA involved. I mean, there's a lot of different programs out there and it's just not from the fishing standpoint. But you also have boat building, boat maintenance. All of that falls, I believe, under the fishing guidelines. And I know COA has a couple of courses out there. We just got to pool the right resources together and provide it for those students that are interested in that field.
Thank you very much. Ms. Alexander?
I think it's a great question and I think we've got a, a great opportunity in a multitude of ways. First, you know, we have the Coastal Studies Institute in Wanchies. I think we need to take advantage of and, and increase our interactions with and partnership with them. We need to increase our internships with commercial fishermen. You know, I, I think one of the things that I've seen with, with children and, and particularly adolescents... You know, I think one of the things that I've seen with children and particularly adolescents when they're looking at trying to choose a career is, a lot of times, they just aren't really sure, or they come up with an idea based on a series of things or experiences that they've had. And so I think when it comes to commercial fishing, is we need to increase the exposure for the students who don't have a lot of exposure to commercial fishing. I live in Collington, so I have a lot of interaction with people who commercial fish, and have a lot of friends and family in other parts of the Outer Banks and Hattersin and Wanches, where that's a significant part of their lives. But there's a lot of folks who are not interacting with and know people in the commercial fishing industry, and I think that's a great opportunity right there, is we need to have a chance for our students to hear from people in the commercial fishing industry and hear about why they might want to do it and what opportunities there might be to start before they get out of high school.
Thank you. And Mr. Parker.
First off, I've volunteered at the Roanoke Island Maritime Museum for the last seventeen years as the captain of the replica shadboat there. And we always talk about the maritime history and the fishing history of our area. Now I'll be the downer. Our fishing industry has to be able to provide a viable family income. Right now, the regulations that are slammed on our fishermen are just intolerable. So you see more and more leaving the industry. There used to be like 35,000 commercial fishing licenses, there are 3,500. There's a reason, it's because our regulations have nailed them. How we as a school district could help, I don't know. That's mine.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we're going to, that will conclude our question and answer segment because this is our time limit. And now we will hear the candidate's closing remarks. These will be in the reverse order from the opening statements. So if I did this correctly, first we hear from Mr. Woody.
I hope the answers that I provided today helped the voters of Derek County to get to know me a little bit better and understand what I hope to accomplish as a member of the board. My experience working with teachers, administrators, and the central office provided me with a unique opportunity to understand the needs of the school system. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Ms. Bother.
I just want to get a plug in on that last question, that we do work with the coast, I didn't get a chance to answer it. We do work with the Coastal Studies Institute and have our internships there, and so we are on, you know, working with that, with the commercial fishing industry, and hope to do more internships with that. Now, my closing statement. My thanks to the League of Women Voters and the Coastal Federation, and to all of our listeners tonight. My passion is education, and it is my expertise as well. This is an important election in unsettled times. Education is about our children, and you have the opportunity to reelect a person who will work every single day for our school. I bring both classroom and board experience, educational knowledge, accessibility, and commitment to ensure a future for our students. I am a leader you can trust. Every decision I make is focused on what is best for our students, our educators, and our families. I'm a conservative spender, and I'm going to make every single penny count, and I will ensure equal opportunities for all students. My 35 years as a classroom teacher at Manio Elementary School qualifies as my best experience. I know the heartbeat of our schools is in the classroom, and I have the passion to work together to continue to accomplish all the best for our students and schools. I would greatly appreciate your vote for Bea Bassnight for Derek County Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bowwell.
Well, I'm going to be short and sweet. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and everybody who's listened in to all the responses. And although I was not able to answer any of the questions, you can find my information on the Derek County Board of Education website, and if anybody would like to specifically ask me any of these questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you. And I just, I'll make it short and sweet, and, oh, and the commercial fishing is definitely a struggle. My husband's a commercial fisherman, my son is a commercial fisherman, I serve on commercial fishery advisory boards. It is a fight that we are going to have to take on, but it is a fight I'm willing to have. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry you couldn't participate, but I precluded, I'm sure that's been explained.
Well, in case anybody's wondering why I was doing this, I had mosquitoes all over me.
Really?
My husband left the back door open.
Goodness. Okay, Mr. Twitty.
I'd like to say that in working with the school system for close to 30 years as an employee, and the last four years as a board member, I have experienced education world differently most. My loyalty has been and will always be for the students and staff of Derek County schools. I love where I live. I hope this is clear through my actions over the past four years, and so I would appreciate your support come this November. Thanks again for tonight.
Okay. Ms. Bowwell.
Yeah, so what is the purpose of education? I believe it's to give children the tools they need in order to succeed in life, whatever path that may be, college or working with their family business or learning a trade. They need to be ready for whatever life throws their way, and we must impress upon them how important education is so that they can achieve any goal they've set for themselves. They must be taught kindness, respect, and truthfulness. They need to learn to be inclusive. Parents and schools need to work together towards this purpose. We must teach them how to think for themselves, give them the true facts, and let them make the decisions for themselves. Basically, Derek County schools are doing very well. Is there room for improvement? Most assuredly. I would very much like to be a part of that process and improvement. And I thank you again for providing this forum for all of us and for all of you listening out there. I would very much appreciate your vote. Susan Bowwell for Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Where am I here? Ms. Alexander.
Thank you to everybody who's been listening tonight or who will watch on another night. Just to reiterate, you know, I want to bring a different perspective to the board that's not currently represented. I'm the only candidate that currently has children in our schools, and also I am a mental health professional. I want to bring that perspective to the board. I have actively been very involved with social media since COVID restricted a lot of our opportunity to interact in person, since December, when I first filed, sharing information, providing analysis about policies, giving suggestions and ideas, volunteering in our community. And I think it's really important that, you know, you really, you know, put your money where your mouth is. And I just, I just really have to say that you're not going to get a person who's going to give you sound bites, you're not going to get someone that's going to make disingenuine promises for me. I'm going to be honest with you, and I'm going to be direct. But the most important thing I want the voters to know about me is that I will represent your interests. My entire career has been focused on advocating for people.
Thank you. Mr. Parker.
Thank you for everybody listening today. I hope it was, helped you figure out who's who and what's what, and vote for the people you think would be best for running and doing things for our students. The most important responsibility of a school board member is to provide oversight and guidance within the school system. Fancy words which mean each one of the board members are recognize that we are representatives of all the people of Derek County. Right now, the board has a challenge that's unique in the world. The generation to come are now facing challenges which we could not even contemplate when we were students. Critical thinking, the ability to discern important facts from masses of data and be able to act on that, be able to control and command technology and science for the common good. That's the goal of our school district. To have graduate from our schools, people who have critical thinking and will become good, committed members of our community and the world. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes the Derek County Board of Education candidate forum. And having had lots of experiencing, experiences both moderating and listening to these forums in the past, I have to say, I think this was one of the most well-thought-out, most sincere effort on the part of everyone. Going to be very difficult to make a choice, but I know that I can just tell by your demeanor and your answers that you have the best interest of our students at heart, and that's a good feeling. We wish to thank all of you candidates for your participation, the voters for their attendance and for their submitted questions. We want to thank the technical team again for setting up and managing this webinar. We will post the videos of this forum on our website, which again, www.lwvdare.org, and our YouTube page. Derek County, our current TV channel will also broadcast it, and the dates and times will be posted on our website. And then we want to remind you to use Vote411. This is a database that's set up by the National League of Women Voters. And all candidates that were here tonight have participated in the League's online voter guide. We encourage that you look at this one-stop website that voters may access on their phone, PC, or whatever other instrument you might have. You'll be asked to key in your address to view the candidate information in your area, their philosophy statements, their social media links, and their responses in their own words to questions we have posed, and more. So check it out if you haven't already done so. And I'll now return the program to Laurel I. B. Bernardo.
Thank you, everyone, every one of you, for a wonderful forum. I appreciate you, your attention, your participation, and mostly, your dedication to the children of Derek County. A few reminders about voting before we conclude. The last day to register to vote by submitting a registration form is Friday, October the 9th at 5:00 p.m. You may also register to vote online if you have a North Carolina driver's license or a ID card. And guess what? You can also register to vote at early voting sites, which brings us to the fact, early voting this year is from October 15th to the 31st. It'll be available to our, to Derek County voters in three locations, and those are on your screen. There's one in Manio, one in Kill Devil Hills, and one in Buxton. The hours are quite extensive this year. I think it's great, Monday through Friday is almost full days, and the three Saturdays in that time period also has early voting hours. If you wish to vote by mail, you can apply, it's a new link, apply online to request an absentee ballot in a special new portal. Will you, you will receive a, it's a secure way to request your absentee ballot that will be mailed to you, and the link is on your screen. Or, easier, call the Derek Board of Elections, and an application will be sent directly to your home. That number is in the middle of your screen. Election Day this year is November 3rd at multiple location sites. I, you may, your election site may have changed this year due to COVID restrictions and limitations, so please check before you go. And the Board of Elections website is where you should go for all these details and many, many, many more. So please go there before you vote on Election Day. We encourage all of you to strive for excellence and to strengthen our democracy, as we do with at the League of Women Voters. And again, I thank everybody who participated this evening, especially the candidates. It was great. Thank you very, very much. Have a good night, stay safe.